Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, May the 9th. Dr. Eskamia is on his way. We had the privilege of hosting the Dallas Fed President Lori Logan this morning at our Windward Campus. And so he, I raced over at the end of that and he was saying goodbyes. So he will be with us shortly, coming over from that meeting. I want to thank our former Foundation Chairman Gabe Gedda for setting up that tour. And I know Dr. Babaly got to meet her last night as part of a group of local business leaders that had dinner with her last night. So we appreciate that opportunity, but I wanted you to know why I was starting the meeting without Dr. Eskamia present. Mr. Rivera told me that was okay, as long as we don't get too far in the agenda without him, I guess.
President's report?
That's right. Let me call the roll call, please. Dr. Adami.
Here.
Ms. Averett.
Here.
Dr. Babaly.
Here.
Mr. Krul.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Loeb.
Here.
Dr. Turner is not with us. I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Dr. Babaly, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And please join us as we read the Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Thank you. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We have the opportunity now for individuals who would like to make comments before the Board on items not on our agenda. Is there any public comment today? Seeing none, we will go ahead and get started with our recognitions today. And we're going to ask Dr. John DeHalkum to come up and talk about our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program.
Madam Chair, esteemed Regents, Dr. Eskamia, who's not here today but in spirit, right? Okay. The VITA, which is the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, was hosted by the Accounting Faculty and Students under the Business and Entrepreneurship Department this spring semester 2023. The VITA program is conducted at the Delmar College Heritage Campus at the Ventures Business Building. In partnership with the Coastal Bend VITA Coalition, several entities that include the United Way of Coastal Bend, Delmar College, Goodwill Industries of South Texas, the Internal Revenue Service, and Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and the Workforce Solutions of Coastal Bend work collaboratively to provide free income tax preparation services to the community. The college has hosted the VITA program for 18 of the last 20 years, but the services were paused during the two years of the pandemic. The services resumed in spring of 2023 and assisted more than 700 community members in processing refunds exceeding $1 million in total with the help from student volunteers from Delmar College and Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi, who worked over 800 hours of community assistance. They did work with a sponsor, and that sponsor funded stipends for the VITA student volunteers during the tax season. Today, the following faculty and staff are present for recognition for service to the community. El Dofino Palacios, Professor of Accounting, Adriavasquez, Instructor of Accounting. And also, the following students volunteered their time and assistance for this program: Nelda Diaz, Alma Martinez, Yoneli Diaz, Rebecca Peralis, Amber Robertson, El Dofino Palacios Jr., Adriavasquez, and I'm sorry, it was Ambert Robertson. Please join me in congratulating the team for their hard work. Mr. Palacios, good luck.
Do you like to? It's okay for them to?
Absolutely. Please.
Again, I'd like to thank Delmar College for the opportunity they've given the Accounting Department to do this. We started this in 2002. That year, we did 75 returns. And as she said, this past year, we did over 700. It's a great learning opportunity for the students. They get real-world experience in doing tax returns for people that walk in, and it's open to the general public, and it's a win-win-win situation. We thank you for letting us do this.
Thank you so much. Thank you for volunteering your time and for the work that you do. Yes, please take a picture.
Do you want to join us?
Sure. It's a great honor.
Pay tax return.
Refund.
You want them to smile, not frown.
One more.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Dr. Halkum, please continue with our recognition for the Texas Public Service Teacher Association First Responder Competition.
Thank you. On Saturday, March 11th, 2023, the Public Service Department partnered and hosted the Texas Public Service Teachers Association's First Responder Competition at Delmar College's Windward Campus in the Public Safety Complex. The awards ceremony was held at Richardson Auditorium. The Texas Public Service Teacher Association is an organization committed to training law and public service high school teachers through instruction and supportive law enforcement curriculum to prepare the next generation of students who plan to pursue a career as first responders. The annual competition attracted 683 student participants this year. The competition provided the participants an arena for hands-on experience to prepare them for potentially dangerous situations in their future roles as the next generation of law enforcement, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians. John Hornsby, instructor and director of the Law Enforcement Academy, led the Delmar College faculty and staff team in collaborating and supporting the competition with the preparations and scheduled events. I'd like to recognize the following faculty and staff that provided support. Many cannot be here today because of conflicts in their class schedules. John Hornsby, as I mentioned, Shawnee Meisner, Henry Cantu, Robert Ruiz, Sean Meredith. The following students from Law Enforcement Academy provided support: Jamie Sparks, Joshua Kent, Jose Gonzalez, Daniel Lopez, Joshua Roque, Vincent Ramirez, Rachel Phillips, Jaylen Winfrey, Alexis Bryant, Joshua Hawks, Jennifer Trevino, Eric Garcia, Stefan Kemp. And then from Emergency Medical Services Program: Rose Hill, Christopher Wilson, Piper Gates. And from the Fire Science Program: Dathan Leva, Philip Basin, Jacob Garcia, and Matthew Villarreal. Please join me in congratulating those faculty, staff, and students for their great work in leading this. If it's okay, we'll have John Hornsby come up and please say a couple words.
Madam Chair, Regents, thank you all for this recognition. This was kind of the culmination of many months of putting together this competition statewide. We appreciate the recognition. It's kind of a testament to the faculty and staffs and students at the Public Service Division and the hard work that they put in every day to educate the current and future public safety professionals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Halkum. We now do our Student Success Report, and we're going to hear from Ms. Patricia Benavides-Dominguez talking about our Student Success Center services.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents. Dr. Eskamia. This afternoon, the highlight will be the Student Success Center. And we'll begin with, okay. The Student Success Center offers more than just tutoring. We aim to enhance students' academic skills as a whole by taking into consideration that student success involves coaching and technological equity. The center offers in-person peer tutoring, a technology resource center, student success coaching, and we have a new virtual reality AMP software to assist students. Although the 22-23 data might seem like we're playing catch-up, we are on track to surpass all 21-22 data points that you see above. This data for 22-23 was taken from September to March. Many of the 22-23 points have already been surpassed for the entire year of 21-22 academic year. Tutoring contacts that you see there is any person coming in to have in-person tutoring session. The Technology Resource Center contacts is any student within that comes into the Technology Resource Computer Lab. Total laptops and computers checked out are the amount of devices checked out by the students. Computer usage and independent studying is any contact with the SSC lab. Student success coaching contact is any in-person coaching contact. Nursing contacts is any nursing student who visited in person. And supplemental instruction is the amount of students who utilize the space we have within SSC for SI sessions. The Student Success Center highlights for 21-22 are listed there on the screen. This enrollment data was taken before registration at the end of each mentioned semester. Do we have any questions? Thank you.
I see none. Thank you very much. As a heads up, we're going to hear our College President's Report, and then we are going to move up our action items, number four and five, which are regarding our Professor Emeritus, so that folks don't have to sit through all of our staff reports. So just wanted to give Dr. Halkum a heads up. But right now, we'll go to our College President's Report.
But if you want to stay firm after your
You're welcome to stay, of course.
You're more than welcome to grab a soda and wait. Thank you, Madam Chair, Regents. A couple days after our April Board meeting, I was invited to attend and keynote the Texas Administrators of Continual and Education Conference in Austin. It was a great time meeting with our colleagues over there who were leading the way. We had a strong Delmar contingent out there, contingency out there that represented the college extremely well in the Continual and Education side. I know they were split between Dallas and Austin. I know Dr. Leonard and the other half of the team were up in Austin and so forth. I was glad to talk to them about the Commission on Community College Finance and so forth, and the implications of HBA and so forth, and how it is going to affect their areas. And so it was a big group of at least a couple hundred people, and I was proud to be certainly representing Delmar College and the Commission on Community College Finance. The following week was the Oso Creek Grand Opening Celebration that we had. I can't tell you how wonderfully, just how wonderful the whole event was. It was attended by several hundred people, I think. And I want to thank all the Delmar staff who put that together, faculty and staff who just poured their hearts and souls into that event, and it showed. There was standing room only under that tent or around the tent, and it was just a phenomenal day to finally, finally come together and celebrate the Oso Creek campus and the like. It was a wonderful opportunity. Again, and thank you to all who participated, whether your attendance and/or putting it together. Following week, I met up in Austin with my colleagues at the quarterly meeting at the Texas Association of Community Colleges. Of course, HBA continues to be at the forefront of all of our discussions and so forth, as you might imagine. And following by, a meeting with the, and I continue to keep my presence with the Legislative Committee, which we met on May 3rd, and again, continued to talk about, there's really only one item right now. There are many others, but the primary item of getting us through the legislative session and keeping HBA intact. That's what's been going on. I'm happy to answer any questions or if there are any comments. That is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia.
Certainly.
I don't see any questions, but I do want to pass on my thanks regarding the Oso Creek campus. The grand opening was the culmination of a lot of hard work, and I know that it wasn't just facilities, it was also academic affairs and student affairs and all the different departments who were moving equipment and getting everything set up, and long before that, who were giving us advice on what the buildings needed to look like and how everything was going to come together. So it really was just a wonderful celebration of a lot of years of work that doesn't go unnoticed, on top of everything else that was happening, having faculty and staff working on that project to bring it to fruition and accounted for and financed and all of those things, that work doesn't go unnoticed. So thank, congratulations to you and your staff for that good job.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We now have the pleasure of considering two recommendations for the position of Professor Emeritus for Delmar College, and I'm going to ask Dr. John DeHalkum to come up and give us that overview and recommendation for each one.
I'm pleased today to present two nominations for consideration of Emeritus Status. Emeritus Status is a distinction that is reserved for those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. This is an important and very distinguished honor. Your packet contains the policy covering the eligibility for the award of Emeritus Status, and it shows distinction in the areas of faculty fundamental responsibilities, including professional practice, educational growth, and institutional and community service. Your packet lists the areas of distinguished service for each nominee. Within the body of the resolution that I will read, there will be a list of examples of their exemplary service. A person upon receiving Emeritus Status will gain privileges, such as being listed in the college catalog, college directory, mailing list, just to name a few. I now present Dr. Jonisa Kane Callaway to you for consideration of Emeritus Status. I would like to briefly mention her early ties to Delmar College through her family before proceeding with her accomplishments. Her dad, Joseph Kane, was a nationally recognized painter, art critic, and educator who served as the Chair of the Delmar College Art Department for 11 years. I understand that Jonisa would occasionally come to Delmar College in her early years and see her dad's art students at work. Our Kane Gallery in the Fine Arts Building was named in his memory and his honor. The Kane Gallery, I don't know if any of you have come to some of the art openings, they have been in that Kane Gallery, named after her dad. She also worked to develop a scholarship dedicated in her parents' names, the Joseph and Mabe Kane Scholarship. Jonisa, could you come forward, please? Although Dr. Kane Callaway did not work as a professor in the Art Department, she did master the art of the English language, serving as professor in the English Department. Our faculty Emeritus consideration today was recommended by the Dean of her division, her department chair, the faculty council, and myself, following the outlined policy and procedures. The packet also contains specific criteria and distinction in professional practice, educational growth, institutional and community service. I'm going to read a resolution in recognition of Dr. Kane Callaway, which highlights her achievements. Then I will ask the Board to accept the resolution and confer Emeritus Status. Whereas, Dr. Jonisa Kane Callaway, Professor of English, served as an exemplary educator among her peers at the college for over 25 years as a full-time, term, and adjunct faculty. During her tenure at the college, Dr. Kane Callaway has consistently advocated for student success. She provided excellent leadership in the areas of developmental education and English. Whereas, Dr. Kane Callaway's list of accomplishments is quite notable. In 2010, Dr. Kane Callaway was recognized as one of the 75 distinguished alumni during Delmar College's 75th anniversary. She has been nominated as Delmar College Teacher of the Year in multiple semesters since 2008. Dr. Kane Callaway was invaluable in serving students through organizations such as the Texas Joint Council of Teachers of English and the Epsilon Beta Chapter of Sigma Kappa Delta. Dr. Kane Callaway also provided dedicated service to the college as a member of multiple instructional program review committees and several college standing committees, including the faculty council, the library committee, and the Developmental Education Council. Whereas, Dr. Kane Callaway is known for her mentorship of students and faculty, innovative teaching methods, and involvement with college and professional affiliate activities. Dr. Kane Callaway authored professional publications and conducted academic presentations through English in Texas. The College English Association and the explicator Dr. Kane Callaway's generosity within the community is evident in her founding of the Joseph A. and Mabe Kane Direct Scholarship through the Viking Foundation, as well as her years of volunteer service for the Humane Society and the Corpus Christi Junior League. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College Board of Regents formally acknowledges, extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Dr. Jonisa Kane Callaway with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, May 9th, 2023. I will now ask you to accept this resolution and confer Emeritus Status for Dr. Kane Callaway.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halkum. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Dr. Adami. And I think there's multiple seconds. I think I heard Mr. Garza first. Is there, Dr. Kane Callaway, we're going to hear from you in just a moment. Is there any public comment on this motion? Are there any comments from our Board? Before we vote, Dr. Kane Callaway, we'd like to say thank you. What a wonderful legacy that your family has given to Delmar College over so many decades. It is a testament, you in and of yourself as a professional, but a testament to your family. So thank you very, very much. Any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution and conferring the status of Professor Emeritus to Dr. Kane Callaway, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
I just have a few words to say. I want to thank Dr. Eskamia and the Board of Regents for this wonderful moment, and thank you, Dr. Halkum, and Dr. Perry, and everyone, for your encouragement. I'm grateful to the administration, faculty, staff, and students who have made Delmar College a great place to work. And as a former student, I can affirm that it is a lovely place to learn and prepare for life. Thanks to my loving and supportive family, my parents, Joseph and Mabe Kane, my husband, Randall Callaway, my children, Allison, Austin, and Alexander, my daughter-in-law, Liz, and my grandson, Wesley Joseph. Delmar College is in my DNA, and because my father was a professor here, I have so many fond memories. My first cat came from Delmar College. She had been rescued by students in my father's art class and was playing around the room, and I got to take her home. As you know, my father started the National Drawing and Small Sculpture Show here 57 years ago, and I remember meeting George Segal, the artist, not the actor, because there's an actor by the same name, but George Segal, the artist. And he was here to judge the show, and just getting to shake his hand when I was a teenager was like meeting a movie star. I remember when the Art Department was in a small white house just off campus before it moved to the second floor of the old history building where the library used to be. So I go way back. I wanted to conclude with honoring my professors that I had at Delmar College many years ago. Dr. Moore in history, Dr. Pierce in government, Mr. Strickland in algebra, Mr. Townsend in trigonometry, Dr. Syracuse in Spanish, Dr. Rushton in sociology, Dr. Brewer in psychology, Ms. Watson in art, Dr. Pickering in music, and Mr. Fulton in English. So in the words of Tiny Tim in Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol, God bless us everyone, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I am pleased today to present our second nominee for Professor Emeritus, Mr. Ron Husken. Our faculty members, our faculty Emeritus consideration today was recommended once again by the department chair, the dean, and the faculty council, and myself as chief academic officer, following those policies that I mentioned previously. And the packet, as you can see, contains the criteria, and you have all of the criteria met by Mr. Ron Husken to be worthy of Professor Emeritus Status. So he has met the criteria for professional practice, educational growth, and institutional and community service. I'm going to read a resolution in recognition of Mr. Husken, which highlights his achievements, and then I will ask the Board of Regents to accept the resolution and confer Emeritus Status. Whereas, Mr. Ronald Husken, Professor of Sociology, served as an exemplary educator among his peers at the college for 21 years, receiving the Delmar College Master Teacher Award in 2009. During his tenure at the college, Mr. Husken served as the faculty coordinator of supplemental instruction from 2009 until his retirement on August 19th, 2022. Whereas, Mr. Husken was invaluable in serving as the faculty coordinator of supplemental instruction. Mr. Husken was instrumental in the implementation and growth of the supplemental instruction program at Delmar College, which enabled countless of students to receive the support to help them succeed in historically difficult courses. Mr. Husken contributed to and chaired multiple program review committees in the sociology and social work programs. Mr. Husken has been a member on countless committees, including Achieving the Dream, Student Success Center Advisory Committee, and Social Sciences Representative to the Faculty Council. Whereas, Mr. Husken was a contributing author to various journal articles, served as a moderator on panels at the Mexican-American Studies annual seminars, and presented at numerous national and regional supplemental instruction conferences and workshops. Mr. Husken was a beloved colleague and mentor in the social sciences. Now therefore be it resolved that Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Mr. Ronald Husken with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day of May 9, 2023. I now ask you to accept this resolution and confer emeritus status for Ron Husken.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom, for that recommendation. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, adopt the resolution, and confer Professor Emeritus status on Mr. Husken?
I'll move. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Loeb made the motion. Dr. Babaly seconded. Is there any comment from the board? Is there any public comment on this motion? Mr. Husken, I want to say thank you for your work. Working in the supplemental instructional program with students who need that extra care is valiant work, and we so appreciate what you have done over your career. Seeing no public comment and no objection, all those in favor of adoption of this motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be very brief. I know some of the other faculty who have been honored with this, and to be included among them is really humbling. I just want to say that I can't think of a better place to have spent my 21 years, or the best group of people to have spent those 21 years with. So, I want to thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Second. With that, we have to move back to the more mundane work, but important work. We are now going to go back to our staff reports, and we're going to hear first from Ms. Patricia Benavides Dominguez talking about our Title V grant.
Good afternoon. We are pleased to announce that Delmar College was awarded a Title V HSI grant. The name of the project is called DMC III, Connectamos, Continuamos, y Completamos, which is translation for connect, continue, and complete. It is a five-year grant that begins October 23 through 2028. The grant total was little slightly in excess of 2.7 million. The grant was a collaboration with grant writer David Trujillo and Associates, David Barretta, Title V Director, Dr. John Dehalcom, Dean Bridges, English Chair Matthew Perry, Speech Chair Dr. Anderson, Dean Jack Southard, faculty member Dr. Francis, Dean Gracie Martinez, Jennifer Gonzalez, our Director of Career Development, and Christina Wilson, and myself. The purpose of the DMC III grant is to expand and enhance support to underprepared socially-economic disadvantaged students, implement best practices, services, and mechanisms to address challenges students face in navigating complex higher ed systems, increase Hispanic and low enrollment persistence, retention, and graduation through guided pathways, and enhancing onboarding processes, increase student rates through enhanced support advising systems intervening when students are off track. The grant will offer a year-round calendar for professional development activities that are culturally relevant, equity-minded pedagogy, to improve student learning and student service outcomes for all employees. We are very proud of this effort by all. Most of them left, but, you know. But they were here earlier. But we are very excited. Any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Vice President Benavides Dominguez. We're very honored to again present this to you all. You know, over the past, Delmar College has been a longstanding HSI, and there's always a couple of points that I like to make with this. These grants are because of the designation from the federal government as a Hispanic-serving institution, and I always like to say that these funds do support all students at the college, and I want everybody to know that, and I say that every time. The vast majority of colleges now in Texas are falling under this umbrella of Title V, especially community colleges. And I'd like to say that, you know, over the years, I think Mr. Garcia and I were talking earlier about the amount of dollars that these federal grants bring to the college, and I think we've brought over $7 million over the past several grants from Title V. And Mr. Garcia likes to refer to this as the fourth leg of the three-leg. It's still, so really, it turns into a chair, right? After three. So, there's always another fund, and there are other grants out there, but it's something that we remain very competitive with and that we bring to our students. It makes a huge impact on our programmatic aspects of support services, instructional support services, and the like. And I think even going back to our supplemental instruction days early on, these are the grants that supported Mr. Husken and his efforts early on. And so, these are critical. I want to thank the team for all those, and back to Mr. Trujillo. I haven't talked to my good friend, Dr. Trujillo, in a while. California, if I'm not mistaken, he's a gentleman working out of California that helps us with this. But again, these are critical dollars. Congratulations to the team and your persistence, because I know this was the second time around, and I think it took the two bites at the apple, Dr. Southard, two bites at the apple to get this, but you remained persistent, and you came back. I remember we all looked at each other, we shook off the dust, and we said, let's go back and get it. Let's try it again, and your persistence paid off. Thank you. Thank you all to the team.
Thank you. She's walked away, but she's coming back. Were there any questions from the board? I did have a question about the how. How will the funds be utilized?
Funds will be utilized with professional development, hiring staff, and training.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks. Next will be our student enrollment report. Ms. Keys, Ms. Benavides Dominguez, and Ms. Sanders are going to present that. Ms. Keys, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Board, Board of Regents, and President Eskamia. Today, we're going to look at a variety of things that impact enrollment and our strategic enrollment management program and plan, and how all this has come together over the last year. It's looking at trend data and a variety of data. We've attempted to integrate some of what was talked about last Friday at the meeting. However, most of that data will come later on as it becomes developed, and so, but we wanted to acknowledge some of that today. As we look at today's presentation, we're going to show an overview of enrollment by looking at the present method that the state utilizes to determine state funding or state reimbursement to all community colleges. This includes a review of the biennium and the impact of contact hours on formula funding. Additionally, the annual enrollment headcount and impact of trends in dual credit, credit and continuing education will be considered. It is important to see the methodology that a state uses to determine funding and how the transition to outcome-based funding can impact the future. Strategic enrollment management goals and strategies are also included to provide insight into the many activities that student services is working on to address the needs of our Community colleges are presently funded on a two-year basis or a biennium, based on the total contact hours for continuing education and credit courses that are earned during the even-numbered academic years. The base year begins for the first semester after the start of the 16-week term in spring. I feel like I always need to repeat that sentence because it gets complicated. The state calls that summer one, but it's anything that would begin such as second eight weeks as of last spring 2022, and would go through the enrollment through last fall and into spring of '23 16-week semester, which is our long semester. Contact hours are the number of hours of instruction that is counted for each individual credit and continuing education student. Basically, it's time and seat. Depending upon the final rulesmaking in House Bill 8 during this legislative session, the calculation may change in transition to a system that is based on outcomes and the completion of various benchmarks, such as certificates, degrees, licensures, or awards of value. This is showing an example of our base year calendar. If you notice, the base year is different for credit and continuing education courses. As you see, the base year for credit courses began February of '22, and with spring flex entry, and conversely, the base year for continuing education began in March with quarter three. So, as we go through some of this terminology, it sometimes seems complicated because there's The impact that enrollment has on revenue is derived from the state appropriations is represented in the blue pie chart, blue sections on this pie chart. State appropriations are presently determined every two years in the biennium and makes up approximately 15.1% of the overall budget, with an additional state benefit towards employee benefits of 5.4%. The projected results based on contact hours shows a decrease in contact hours for credit courses of 6.9% and an increase in continuing education courses of 24.2%, with an overall decrease of 3.4% for the college. This is in large part due to the impact COVID-19 had over the last three years. And you'll see that the breakout here is a lot, follows the trends that Dr. Eskamia and Ms. Scott have been talking about as we've looked at the transitions, as we begin looking at outcome funding. And now, Vice President Patricia Benavides Dominguez will continue with more information
DMC in comparison to other large colleges is on par with overall enrollment decreases. We are down in credit contact hours, but higher in continuing education CE contact Texas community colleges receive success points based on this model. Colleges earn success points for various student performance milestones achieved along the way from developmental to earning a credential. This slide provides a historical perspective on credit and continuing education students we serve, spring '19 to the current year. Although the spring '23 data is preliminary, currently, we serve slightly over 12,000 students and are trending up 1.9%. This includes our flex registration for our second eight weeks term. Currently, we are in early registration, registering for summer and for fall. This slide provides a historical perspective on credit and continuing education students we served from 2019 to current year. From fall 2022, we served 12,371 students. Did I miss that? Okay. 871 students, I'm sorry. A slight decrease of 2.5%, which is the continued impact of COVID-19. The next two slides we will examine. Headcount from '21-'22. The large colleges in our peer group headcounts, for the most part, are all down, and enrollment challenges continue statewide with the exception of one institution. As you can see by this slide, community colleges are struggling nationwide. This slide shows community college enrollment state and nationwide. In addition to looking at our headcount, it is important to be familiar with our contact hours. The slide provides a historical perspective from fall 2018 to current year, which is still preliminary. Contact hours reflect the amount of time a student spends in instructional activities as part of their enrolled coursework. The chart illustrates a steady increase in contact hours for the first two cohort years. The impact of COVID is evident in fall 2020, and contact hours have fluctuated for the Spring, Delmar College's dual-credit program continues to thrive. Spring '22 to spring '23 enrollment is slightly up. Overall, the slide shows a five-year increase of 2.3%. We continually, we currently have 38 high schools participating in our dual-credit program. We continue to strive to strengthen our ISD partnerships. Continuing education did realize an increase in contact hours over the academic year 2020-2021. The historical perspective on the annual contact hours is shown here, beginning with 2017-2018 to the current year of 2021-22. Please keep in mind that continuing education is on a quarter system with only quarters one and two as the remaining quarters for the base year. Total continuing education enrollments continue to realize growth over the last three academic years. A 2% increase is noted. This is attributed to the strong enrollments in continuing education's healthcare programs, industry technical programs such as welding, HVAC, transportation services, which is truck driving CDL. All such programs are in high demand across the Coastal Bend as, and classified as targeted occupations for the workforce solutions of the Coastal Bend. As per Board workshop request, these are the top five degrees Delmar College awards. The slide provides a breakdown of degrees awarded by major. Over the next few months, we'll be taking a deeper dive into the data and trend analysis. Healthcare continues to be in great demand across the Coastal Bend, as well as the state of Texas. The single largest CE programs of the academic year 2020-2021 is in healthcare services with over 4,200 enrollments alone. CE healthcare services comprise of programs such as EKG tech, phlebotomy, patient care tech, certified nurses aid. Secondly, the career and community education area had almost 4,000 enrollments. A number of career and community education programs are welding, HVAC, transportation services, carpentry, and construction trades. Finally, CE contract training reported almost 2,500 enrollments for the academic year 2022. A number of specialized training programs were offered to area business and industry in such areas as safety, crane operations, forklift, forklift driving, scaffold folding. Continued growth in these programs is forecasted for the subsequent academic years due to the consistently high demand by employers across the Coastal Bend. Any questions? The next slides will now, we will transition to the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, and Associate Vice President Cheryl Sanders will present these efforts.
Just a second. I think we do have a question. Yes, Mr. Loeb has a question.
On the, on the spring dual-credit headcount, does that, it was 2701, does that include high school students who are taking CE classes, or is that just high school students taking Common Core?
That's just high school students taking credit courses. The other enrollments that are dual-credit CE are reflected in the CE numbers.
Okay.
Dr. Ray, do you have a breakout of the dual-credit that are CE?
Great question, by the way. And the numbers are right now embedded within the numbers that VP Dominguez noted on our continuing education numbers, and that does cover our high school partners, as well as our open enrollment programs that are based here at the CED and other campuses and such. The dual-credit numbers at this point that were just presented are strictly the... The dual credit numbers at this point that was just presented are strictly the ISD partners that we work with, which is about 38 high schools at this present time. We work on CE side, we work with over 30, probably close to about 38 high schools as well. And so we do a lot of dual, we call them dual enrollment CE courses as well, just they're not broken out as you see them. But we could certainly break them out if that's something that you want to have us bring it to.
That would be great. Does the 2701 also include the early college programs where we have like a specific high school? Okay. So if we have 400 in at collegiate, 400 of that 2701 is them?
Yes. And if you want to break out of that, we have that.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents, President Eskamia. On this slide, you will see the strategic enrollment goals, increasing access, simplifying onboarding, and improving retention and success. The strategic enrollment management plan represents a college-wide collaborative effort guided by the college mission, vision, and strategic priorities to achieve our goals for student recruitment, persistence, and transfer and graduation rates at Delmar College. On the following few slides, I will highlight a couple of strategies for each goal for which baselines were set during the 2122 academic year. Goal one is to increase access. One example is increasing targeted outreach efforts featured strategically recruited employees, alumni, and students. These are non-recruited, non-recruitment employees. Representation from academic programs such as faculty, chairs, program directors can provide valuable insights connecting prospective students to their future academic programs, supporting the post-collegiate transition to either workforce or academic transfer endeavors. The mission of the Student Enrollment Center staff is primarily to facilitate matriculation to prospective students to the college at large and not necessarily to program-specific outreach. In 2122, there were 145 non-recruitment participants that attended outreach events. 21 types of events were held. Some were multiple times throughout the year for a total of 47 recruitment events. Another example is increasing community awareness of financial support, opportunities for post-secondary education. We realize that there can never be enough opportunities for us to provide information to our community about the numerous financing options available to help pay for education. In 2122, the foundation conducted 12 scholarship community engagements. They had over 17,000 combined participants within the engagements. Additionally, the financial aid staff coordinated 98 high school free application for federal student aid workshops and night engagements. Goal two is to simplify onboarding processes. One way of doing this is by increasing the utilization of financial aid resources and scholarships. Not only is awareness important, but getting students to actually apply is critical. For academic year 2122, 2,235 students applied for scholarships. There were 7,078 unduplicated applicants for financial aid. There were 1,662 students that received scholarships, 1,257 students that received institutional loans, 5,891 students that received institutional grants, and 87 students that received work-study. Additionally, a key performance indicator for goal two is the percentage of students earning six or more college-level credits in term one. Our target by 2024 is 50%, and as you can see, we had 49% in fall of 2022. Goal three is to improve retention and student success supports. One example of this is increasing dual credit student matriculation to Delmar College. Of dual credit career and technical education seniors enrolled in workforce programs from spring 22 to fall 22, 30% matriculated to Delmar College. Another example of this is increasing the success and completion of male students of color. The development and implementation of the Men of Color mentorship program and outreach initiatives actively seeks to increase the success and completion rates of our male students of color. Of the male students of color enrolled in fall of 21, 71% persisted to the spring of 22. The goal will be to increase this persistent rate by 3%. The Men of Color program also seeks to increase credentials earned by their male students of color. 488 degrees were earned and 389 certificates and 52 advanced credentials were earned by male students of color during the 2122 academic year. The next two slides are examples of the college partnering with third-party companies specializing in targeted registration recovery services utilizing social media platforms and direct student outreach. The first company the college engaged with was Motomatic. During November of 22, to affect the spring 23 enrollment, Motomatic specializes in outreach into students via social media platforms only. We provided the company with a student listing of emails to pursue the target stopout population who had not enrolled in fall 21 or in spring and summer of 22 with a GPA of 2.0 or higher. Facebook was the number one social media platform used, followed by Snapchat. This was a very successful collaboration with 8% of the stopouts re-enrolling. This slide also shows pertinent details regarding the campaign. The second third-party vendor we are currently working with is Graduation Alliance. This company is different from Motomatic in that it does a four-week direct student outreach outreach campaign utilizing email, text, and direct phone calls. It does not use social media. This slide shows the various student populations that we are pursuing. We started this outreach last week, and we met with the vendor. We're going to be meeting with the vendor weekly to measure the progress and tweak any issues as they arise. This company was provided a student listing of emails and phone numbers only for direct outreach. For both vendors, Motomatic and Graduation Alliance, the student doesn't see the company's names. They will only see Delmar College imaging. We work with them on a detailed script, and they all, they will also see only DMC emails, phone numbers. Everything that they see will be branded with Delmar College. The student outreach endeavor is a united effort with outreach and enrollment and the College Relations Office and Information Technology. There's more to come in September when we measure the results and evaluate each vendor's possible future endeavors. Say something? No?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Are you moving to the next slide?
Yeah.
Are you changing topics?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. I want to add this. So Regents, I'd like to share a little bit about these, these two groups here. Motomatic has a, both are being tested by us. You all have asked and previous boards have asked us to, to try different approaches to reaching out to students that have already been enrolled at the college and who have stopped out slash dropped out. Okay. These are efforts, two different types of efforts, and we're testing the results to see which one is more beneficial, obviously to the college and so forth. The first one is, again, it's a different platform, it's a different technique that is using, using primarily social media to reach out to these students. And we all know that they're always engaged on their phones and/or devices. And so we've, we've run, we've run a test sample with them, and we feel, we felt like the outcomes were good, and we're looking to compare it against a very different methodology with this other group, Graduation Alliance, of whom I've been working with for a year and a half or so. I've been talking to them for about a year and a half, and then, and then finally, we got some momentum early, let me say late last fall and going into this semester and finally engaged them. And, and they're two different approaches. This approach is one that I think, well, we're waiting to see, but it's certainly very different in that they have an army of people, okay? They have what we do not. I'm talking dozens and dozens of people who do just this, and they would be making hundreds and hundreds, even thousands of phone calls, repeated phone calls, and reaching out to these individuals personally and talking to them and bringing them on. Now, again, we are giving them an opportunity to prove themselves. We've used HIRF dollars to facilitate this, and we're waiting to see. They have, this group has remarkable outcomes and comes highly recommended from the Dallas County, or Dallas College, as well as Alamo Colleges and, and a few others. Lone Star, Lone Star. And so I've spoken with their chancellors, and, well, I didn't speak to Mike over at Alamo, but I did speak to the other two regarding their outcomes here. And so again, we are testing it. It, I think in both cases, they're yielding things and teaching us things, and we're teaching them things because I know that, that every college is unique, and, and this group is, is really focused on, on us. They're giving us some very, very special attention, I will say, and we will look forward to reporting the outcomes of this. And again, these are those students, these are not new to the college students. These are students who have come in and stopped out for various reasons. I think any which, any way that we contact those students has been what's been requested from you all and so forth, so we've been working with these groups to move this ahead. So stay tuned, and if we certainly have any questions and thoughts. We've talked about this before. We've talked about it, and so we're bringing it to your attention now, and so please, if there are any comments or questions, we need, we would love to hear from you all.
So on the, on those, do we have any, are we, are we going to get any data on why they stopped out? Like, do we have any idea? And is there any way to get it?
No, they're, they're, they're not doing that.
Okay.
They're not going to provide their, we give them the list. We have not done a survey to those stopouts of like why. We did do a survey for the Motomatic students that we engaged with, and we got, we got a decent response rate. Basically, the results were, yeah, they are seeing us on social media and engaged because we were on social media, and it was very targeted to them. It wasn't, it's different in that college relations, you know, we tell them, hey, can you help us promote something, market something in different platforms, and they do.
Right.
But Motomatic, they, if, if you are a Facebook person, they're only going to target you on Facebook. If you're a TikToker, then they're going to go on TikTok. So it was, it was a very strategic campaign.
Yeah, I mean, I just think in focusing that campaign in the future and for our own strategic planning purposes, it would be nice to get some information on why they didn't finish. The, the other question I have, I saw that 30% of our high school CTE students come here after they get out of high school. Do we have any other recruitment program that has anywhere near that capture rate?
I'm not familiar with anything else. We were measuring the...
So at this point, our most effective way to get people to come here after high school is to deliver them college while they're in high school?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you'd get a resounding yes on that one.
Yes.
Just wanted to point that out.
Yes, and our goal is to, before they exit, to earn a credential.
Right.
I have an observation, I don't know about it. So do we have an outreach into immigrant communities in our region to expand our focus into some global outreach for nursing education, for culinary arts, for pharmatech? I mean, these are all now, in view of the pandemic, we have citizens here, you know, tax-paying citizens here, large communities, you know, Muslim population, African population, Morocco, Pakistan, India. And there is a necessity globally now, and they are not being filled up by traditional universities in the US. Some community colleges have, and our president, Mark, and we briefly chatted, there are some community colleges who are reaching out to attract tuition-paying international student body. And it's good for the community because it, it has apartment rentals, buying cars. I mean, these, these are students who can go to American colleges paying tuition and contributing economically to our community. Something to keep on our radar for strategic planning and, and, you know, your, your input and your vision because it ties into our global vision of our vision statement because we are serving local and global communities. So that's something we should make a concrete commitment to, to expand into that. And I bet there will be some rewards immediately in the next year or so if we try, and that can be long-lasting partnerships with global institutions too, just as a thought.
Duly noted. Thank you. Mr. Garza, I had a question.
It's kind of a question, it kind of ties back. First off, let me say that I want to congratulate staff on getting these dollars to the grants program related to, in Spanish, but it's connect, continuing and completion. And again, when we look and we target, we constantly see reports and see targets that we have, or goals that we have to try to improve our completion rate, particularly here at Delmar. And we've got those dollars, and I saw use of those dollars as being kind of general in terms of professional or employee development. And my thoughts are more, we've talked about, is there a need to increase either our resources or our training related to advising the students? When you look at some of the challenges that we have on that screen right now related to incomplete applications, dual credit incomplete applications, and those are all, I'm going to say, challenges that we've got in order to get those students in our doors and then, and to be part of our completion rates. And so it seems to me that the focus for these grant dollars should be in what do we need to do in order to improve these numbers and the numbers we want to see at completion?
Regent Garza, I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, part of the grant is a continuation of the CINDAC grant. The CINDAC grant emphasized the pathways and advising. We hired advisors. We are going to hire more advisors with this, this grant, and still the emphasis is on pathways and advising, onboarding, because like you see one of our target groups right there, the 4,900 students, and that number changes daily because we get, you know, on any given day, we could get, now that we're getting closer to the fall, we can get 400 apps a day on Apply Texas. And because higher ed systems are complex, you have to give us a transcript, you have to give us meningitis, you have to give us a high school transcript, a college transcript, you know, if, if you're not a citizen, other documents. So this grant will also help us with streamlining our onboarding processes. I didn't detail that in the grant, but it is in detail in the grant.
And I'd like to also see you gear your, I want to say your continuing education or continued professional development of your employees. I mean, you've got a big spectrum, say for instance, from a faculty member that wants to come in and just do his hours or his time, and then those like one of the gentlemen that we just honored or we named, Professor Emeritus Wright, that he wanted to take the extra step and looking to see what he could do to try to help students that needed, needed additional help. So those, I want to say those staff or the employees or the faculty that have a passion for helping those students that need, say for instance, more help than the students that come in already knowing the ropes, already knowing what they need to do in order to get, get ahead.
Well, we definitely have two great leaders leading that event, and that is David Barretta, our TATA V director, and our very own... And that is David Barretta, our Title V Director, and our very own Leticia Wilson, who is our Director of Advising Initiatives. Stand up and give a wave, Leticia. She's a great champion in terms of doing lots of very detailed professional development, sometimes almost weekly or multiple times a week, to faculty, to staff, and training all of us to be better at advising, at being aware of certain topics that are, you know, affecting our students, affecting staff. So that will continue with this grant as well.
Okay, and I had one more question. It's a little bit unrelated to this continued education. But we've seen some of our enrollment numbers going down because of the COVID influence. And coming out of it, how do we determine? We talked about a demand for healthcare, our healthcare programs, our healthcare training. How do we determine what our capacity is so that we make sure that we keep enough capacity to be able to accept the students that want to, that want to feel those? If we have dropping, if we have enrollments that are dropping off in other continued education programs or other programs that we have, but we've got some demand in other programs, how do we make sure we keep the capacity levels to a point that we can keep the numbers rising?
We are working on that constantly because there is such a demand in healthcare. But we can judge by the number of applicants and some of our, also the number that are in our prerequisite courses, the demand out there. And so we do constantly look for new faculty for a nursing program to meet the demand. Does that answer your question?
That's most of it. I just, there's also terms of capacity, terms of equipment, or terms of materials that you have for different programs. Do we make sure that we keep building capacity in the areas that you can anticipate continued growth?
Yes, sir, they do. We stay on top of the needs for equipment, primarily through jet grants and other grants and internal funding. But most of the capacity is determined by clinical sites. And there's only, there's a finite number of clinical sites within the local hospitals and the capacity of the number of students that they can take. And those are shared between Texas A&amp;M and Corpus Christi, Texas A&amp;M and Corpus Christi and Del Mar College, plus a few others. And so what we find is most often, it's the determining factor is how many can those sites take? How many students at a time? So it's a balancing of all of that.
The other thing also, if I may add, Regent Garza, is that relatively speaking, there are more people available to teach on the CE side. It's a little easier, nothing's easy, right? But it's relatively easier to find and credential faculty for those courses. They're practitioners usually and so forth. There's a lot of nurses that can teach and the like. And then on the technical or the workforce side, industrial side and the like, it's just, they're, like I said, it's not easier, but there are more instructors available for these classes also. So in terms of answering the part of your question about ramping up and being and watching the market and so forth, at any given point, we're having to balance the need, you know, the supply and demand and so forth. I mean, a lot of times the demand is in a lot of different school districts, but just for a few students. And then I know Dr. Leonard and others are always pushing us to say, we need more instructors here, we need more instructors there. So we have to balance that out, again, with the, to make sure that we have enough students to make, to meet a whole section in our class and the like. So it's a faster-moving game. It's not necessarily easier, it's just a lot more volume. But that's how we've gotten to the numbers that we've achieved. It's a, were you going to say something, Mr. Rivetta? So I don't know if that helps, but it's just a faster-moving game, or I shouldn't call it a game, but just an operation.
It does help. I was just, I'm wanting to feel comfortable that we're not missing some opportunities when we see declining enrollment as a whole. But we see strong indicators that there's some areas where there may be more needed, so.
Oh, yeah, well, and we have served way more students in a particular year. You can, that one slide that showed in our enrollment side, back in 2011 and 12, we were serving 20% more students than we're serving now. So we can find the capacity and so forth, we just have to manage it like anything else and prepare for it. So it's just, it's just, you know, it's evolving. And at the end of this, I'm going to have a comment about everything we're showing you is going to change. So I'm waiting on that piece, but anyway.
I would say that a lot of our adult enrollment has to do with how the economy is going. You know, if there is no pressure, and I mean, I think that's what's good about the bachelor's program, is that does provide an opportunity for people who are already working but want to move up to do that. But, you know, the reality is, a lot of people aren't going to come back to school unless they have to to get a new job. And so unemployment rate has a huge impact on it. But I think when we're dealing with that, it's important for us to pivot to, how do we make sure that we're getting high school students ready for those fields that? Because when unemployment's low, that means there's also a labor shortage and there's more demand for businesses to either cross-train people or to get high school students who are ready. I would just say on the high school thing and on enrollment, I think we have an advantage in that we take everyone, you know, we take the top 100%. And so unlike everybody else, and we have ongoing relationships with all the high schools. So I think we need to look at, how do we make it where when somebody registers for high school and they enroll in their high school, they are also enrolled with us? That that is one document packet. Because, I mean, even me, I'm, you know, it's like, we have CTE, we have dual-cred, you know, we have early college and we have CTE. And it's, and I don't know that it's worth it for us to try to explain those to high school students. It's more worth it to, okay, you go to this high school, you're a Del Mar student as soon as you sign up for a class that happens to grant college credit. And so I think that level of seamlessness is what we should be shooting for rather than, okay, you want to be in a Del Mar program, here's another stack of paperwork to fill out. If we can, you know, if we can make it where there's one stack of paperwork that they do with the high school, and then they're in our system and they're ready to go, and then it's, okay, here's a class you sign up for as part of your normal high school sign up, here's the list of things you can do in the summer, you know, if you want to come over and do stuff during the summer. I think that's a, I don't know, to me, that's a more rational way to manage it rather than trying to convince people to sign up for a special program.
So I think the impending legislation that we are waiting to mature, if you will, and get to the goal line, will have those types of effects. Access will be like never before and support will be like never before. And as we were chatting the other day, both you, Regent Loeb, and Regent Garza and I, and I've chatted with our Chair, that the dual-credit model that we currently have, which is a primary access point for our community, let's just say that, and has all this potential, needs to be revisited. It needs to change. It will change whether we move it, whether we budge or not. So we have an opportunity now to, I think, do things that we aspired to do 10-plus years ago. But the laws weren't in our favor and the resources weren't.
Let Dean Sanders finish her last slide, and then there is an opportunity for some overarching questions as well.
All right, to conclude, we are excited to announce that we've selected Campus Works as our Strategic Enrollment Management Consultant. Campus Works is in the process of assigning an enrollment manager who will work with us to develop a specific project schedule. The Campus Works Engagement Manager will work with us to review materials and items such as our student information system, our marketing technologies, and our strategic plan. They will lead focus group sessions and interviews with selected units across specific areas of the college, including faculty, staff, students, campus leadership, and standing committees. Through the facilitated sessions and individual meetings with staff and leadership, as well as comparative information from peer data, information, and higher education best practices, Campus Works will assess and evaluate current and potential enrollment streams and student personas to determine and forecast market share potential. Campus Works review will focus on the current and future state processes that have the greatest impact on the enrollment process, including but not limited to advising, degree audit, financial aid, and student accounts. They will perform a detailed analysis of the data collected during the focus group sessions and document review to provide us with a SWOT analysis and assessment of the gaps that we need to address. That concludes the presentation. Do we have any additional questions?
I apologize, I've been calling you by the wrong title. And Dr. Esquimia, put a little note in front of me, Associate Vice President Sanders. Thank you.
Perfectly fine.
I apologize for that. I have a question about this slide, and then I have a question about a previous one. So the, well, obviously, they're going to come out with recommendations for staff to implement. Will they also have potentially policy or budget recommendations that might reach the board level? And how does this work? That's question one. And question two is, how does this work dovetail into what we're doing in strategic planning?
I can help with that.
Okay.
So once we get a review and an analysis, we've been waiting a long time for this group to join us and analyze things. The recommendations will absolutely come to us in a way, in shape and form, over the next few months so that we can bring recommendations and shifts, make the adjustments for our strategic enrollment. So and one of the things that's important is, one of the first things, remember, it's not just front-end recruitment, I mean, retention is what it all begins with. Keep the customer you have kind of thing. And so that'll be part of all of this. And now, given where we're going with the commission, and now with the change of student, with outcomes being performance-based and so forth, we're going to have to make dramatic shifts. So the timing of this was held off for those reasons with the prospect of the commission's work coming to an outcomes-based conclusion as it is. So putting all those pieces together, we will, to answer your question, yes, we will come back to the board and we will move as much of our own pieces of the puzzle around. And then those pieces that remain missing will absolutely come for integration into the strategic planning process to make changes longitudinally, as well as bringing forth recommendations for budgetary changes or adjustments.
And additionally, Dr. Vareal and Dr. Sambi are a part of our first meeting with Campus Works. So they're integral part of this.
And I know you all are watching the commission and so forth and seeing, and the Campus Works folks are very familiar with the commission's work and watching Texas very closely. I worked with, I talked to them in Denver when we were at American Association, as well as these other groups. So stay tuned, but yes, ma'am, we are coming your way.
My overall comment is, one, I'm thrilled to see the work we're doing in our stopped-out students because we've talked a long time, how do we move students from being part-time to full-time? How do we move those who are coming in and out to be more consistent? Because completion, we all know, is more efficient and there's more potential there for the students that we currently know who they are. But I think you're hearing amongst the board, both at our visioning process a couple of weeks ago, as well as some of the conversation today, that this recruitment pipeline for us is very important. And so coming back with, seeing the thought process, seeing your internal workings as well as what's important from a strategic planning standpoint around that recruitment process is going to be important because we don't get them in the pipeline, we can't get them through the pipeline to completion. And we recognize that there's a lot of variables on all pieces of the pipeline. My question specifically is around goal number one. You talked about your increased targeted outreach, and you gave us numbers of events and numbers of Del Mar College participants. But you didn't talk to us about numbers of actual recrutees that attended, potential students that attended, and what the rate was for turning those students into, those potentials into applicants and those applicants into students. And so I know that you all track that, but are there numbers along that that we can see so we understand? Are those efforts providing good fruitful results for us?
Yes, we can definitely provide those numbers. We just didn't have them for this presentation because we weren't tracking them for this particular goal. But we do have those.
We do have, like, how many students came to our Pathway Nights and how we're tracking them, how we're engaging, and the number of students that just recently came to Discover Del Mar. We had approximately 700 that attended. The table events that we have, we gather all student data from there and we put it in our CRM and we are outreach-ing. We can send you that data.
From our perspective, I think it's more important to understand that conversion rate for those potential students than it is for us to know how many folks from Del Mar attended those events. So I think that would be an important piece of that.
The deeper diver is on the yield and conversion rates. Yield, get them to apply, convert them to actual students and so forth, and we can follow those data. But what this did primarily today was, it shared a lot of, there have been a lot of questions about, are we doing this, are we doing that, are we doing that? Now we need outcomes, and we're about to have our outcomes metrics changed. And so that's another reason for us to, you know, before we go fill, let me just say, we've got a lot of plates we're spinning right now with all the changes coming. So I think we can take, we can talk about yield and conversion for sure, no matter what. And we have got to bring those new metrics back to the board and give orientation as to what the outcomes and the rules are as it pertains to the commission's recommendations. And the advisory committee of which Dr. Rivetta sits on, that is guiding all of those rules. Lots going on, lots going on with this.
Do we know on the, on the student success funding, there was a point total? Do we know what they're going to pay per point? Have they given us any sort of, nothing?
It's going away.
Oh, okay.
Student success points is going away.
Okay, what do they pay now on that? Is there?
There's a rate, and it changes every year, and it's by category.
Okay, so it depends on what it, like, the certificate is different if it's a different thing?
Yes. With each benchmark.
Okay, and so that's going away and that's getting replaced with, when they get a certificate, when they transfer to a four-year or when they get an associate?
15 hours, 15 hours dual-credit. Well, first of all, by the course, by the second, by the credit hour taken, we're going to get paid by the credit hour taken. And then the number of, whenever a student hits 15 credit hours, there's going to be a jolt of dollars for that. There's going to be other, of course, graduation rates, of course. And then they're going to weight them differently for students of economic, students who are economically disadvantaged, who are socially disadvantaged and all these other things. So they'll have different weights, and as they meet metrics and certain success point, or let me say, benchmarks along the way, we're going to get certain amounts for each one of those. That's what we're hashing out, and that's what Mr. Rivetta, Dr. Rivetta, excuse me, is working on right now to determine those dollars. But for instance, a graduation, a completion would be roughly $1,200 to $1,500. We might receive, and if, for an associate degree. And if we complete a bachelor's degree, we're talking about a proposal of somewhere around $4,500 for each bachelor's degree. And so it gets significant, it adds up. And so just stay tuned, we're just as anxious as you are to see what work comes out of the advisory commission or committee.
Okay, thank you.
Stay tuned.
Any other questions? Thank you all for that thorough presentation. And again, we're engaged in these numbers, so appreciate our questions. We're going to now move on to our preliminary budget discussion. Do you have any introductory remarks, Dr. Esquimia?
I would. This is the time of the year, Regents, where we really begin ramping up. As the semester comes to a conclusion, the business office is really working throughout the semester, but especially at this point, going into the summer, and preparing our internal discussions our, our inter, internal discussions and bringing the needs and culminating the needs into a report. And so we'd like to talk to you about process at this point as we get ready. Again, there's theoretically three primary legs of the stool. And we talked about a fourth leg out there with the federal grants and other grants as well. But today's presentation really is about kind of turning up the heat on the conversation about the budget here at the college and how we will march into the summer with an ultimate end for your consideration at the end of August whereby we would ask for your consideration to ratify the 23, 24 fiscal budget. And we call that the 24 budget, don't we?
Fiscal year 2024. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. Today is the first of many preliminary 2024 budget presentations that will lead us into a budget workshop schedule for the end of July. We will be reporting today on the best available information while there are pending external factors needed to finalize our estimated state appropriations and estimated property tax collections. The college's state appropriations revenues will be finalized in the near future once the legislative process for the proposed new Texas community colleges funding model also recognized as HB8, SB 1201, has run its course. The college's property tax revenue is mainly driven by the no new revenue tax rate calculation that will be also finalized in July. This complex calculation requires seven significant variables that will be included in the certified values report from our appraisal district expected sometime near the end of July. We expect that our revenues will be more definitive at our July budget workshop when we take a deeper dive on the 2024 proposed annual budget. Today's slide deck includes an overall of the college's budget reporting and planning process, followed by the budget calendar and preliminary revenue estimates and trending budget requests. Dr. West will now start us with the college's reporting and planning process.
Good afternoon, Regents and Madam Chair. We wanted, before we start talking about our preliminary budget, we did want to review with the board, since we have a few new members, our GFOA participation in their awards for excellence in reporting. We have handed out to you, I think you have our annual budget report for fiscal year 2022, and that is the actual finished product of our budget process, which we kick off today. So, Delmar College participates in these three awards for excellence in financial reporting. And we have done these reports since 2010 and have received an award every year. And, and our, the three reports that you see here are under review by the GFOA right now.
Can you tell us, Dr. West, what GFOA stands for? Can you remind us?
Yes, the Government Finance Officers Association. So to be able to qual, to participate in these awards for excellence, you have to have best business practices in place and you have to make, meet the stringent criteria for each one of these reports. The awards for excellence recognize governments that excel at, at having these best business practices and budget practices. It is evidence that there is a spirit of transparency and full disclosure. So on the annual comprehensive financial report, the business office team works with Collier Johnson &amp; Woods, Bridgette Cook, and we work together to make sure that the report is in full compliance with the requirements. On the popular annual financial report, that is an extraction of the highlights of the financial data in the ACOFER, and that is produced by our college relations department. And it is supposed to be pleasing to the eye and easy to understand for people without a financial background. And then the last report that I'm going to talk about, of course, is, is more focused on today. And to be able to participate in this program, it's not just the report that has to meet the criteria, but it's our processes, our best practices. You have to illustrate, of course, your report is your final document of proof, but your process and your best practices have to be that you are tying your resources to the strategic plan, that you've got best budget and financial practices and policies in place for your policies and your structure. Using all the, the same types of governmental structures used by all governmental entities across the United States with major fund structures, major revenue streams, expenditure categories, that you also include long-term financial planning in your annual process. And the final product is your annual budget report. And to earn recognition for this award, this report serves as your policy document, your financial plan, your guide to operations, and it's a communication device that is attractive and oriented to the reader's needs. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Landrum, who is going to review with you our budget process and calendar.
Thank you, Dr. West. Good afternoon. So for our new Regents, I am going to go over our budget process. I will discuss what we've completed so far in the process and what to look forward to in the next few months. So there are five phases to our budget process. Our planning phase is from October to January. Our data-informed decision phase is in February. Our review and recommendation phase is March through July. And then our last two phases are in August, which include our budget approval and our property tax approval phase. So during our planning phase, a tuition and fee assessment was started by Mr. Garcia and the development of our budget calendar happened. In November, Mr. Garcia met with student government and provided, provided a tuition and fee update. In December, we provided the board with an update on the tuition and fee assessment and distributed our budget sub worksheets to our budget managers. So these worksheets are sent out to gather information on any items that departments need that are related to technology, facility maintenance, marketing, or equipment. So in January, we held a meeting with our budget committee. We officially kicked off budget. We just distributed our budget summary worksheets and provided budget training on multiple days for our budget managers. So during this time, we also launched our SharePoint for the Budget Office, which provides information on the budget process, training, and additional resources online. So during the data-informed decision phase, Mr. Garcia provided the board with a recommendation for tuition change, for tuition and fee changes, in which the board approved a $2 tuition increase. Also during this time, the Budget Office started receiving information on those sub worksheets for technology, marketing, facility maintenance, and equipment requests for next year. So during the review and recommendation phase, budget managers are working on their budget request. They go through multiple approvals prior to being submitted to the Budget Office. Preliminary property values are received from the appraisal district and our office begins compiling and analyzing these budget requests. So what to expect as we move forward? In June, we will provide a budget update to the board and send out preliminary budgets to our budget managers. In July, we will present our budget workshop to the board. We will receive our certified property appraisals and then we will send out a second preliminary budget report to our budget managers. So during the budget approval and property tax approval phases, we will publish our tax rate notice and seek board approval to conduct a public hearing on August 22nd to seek approval for the fiscal year 2024 budget and property tax rates. Are there any questions on these slides? Okay. Now, Mr. Johnson will continue with our revenue challenges and assumptions.
Good afternoon, Regents. There's definitely more challenges than assumptions here this year. As many of you have heard in the past, the college has referred to its revenue budget as a three-legged stool. Those components include state funding, tuition and fee revenue, and property taxes. While, while not unusual, this year's state budget has presented many challenges due to the information which is still not available. I'm going to jump around just a little bit. Let's begin with state appropriations. We know that we will at least receive what is currently budgeted during the last biennium and do not anticipate receiving additional fund, and do anticipate receiving additional funding once the legislation has completed their process. What we do not know is how much additional funding will be and when those extra appropriations might be received. Now let's turn to tuition and fees. As was indicated before, we increased tuition by $2 during our February board meeting. In addition, growth in students returning to campus has continued to rise. Like ours, a large number of community colleges nationwide have not seen enrollment growth as quickly as anticipated. For this reason, we have adjusted our budget to reflect current enrollment trends. Now, my favorite subject is property taxes, which I'm sure you all have been waiting for. At the end of April each year, we receive a preliminary taxable value report from the appraisal district. Over the years, as might be expected, protests which are filed by business and property owners will grow or decrease with those changes over the previous year's changes. Since beginning to monitor these changes in preliminary numbers in 2009, growth year over year has ranged from a low of negative 3.9% to a high of 11.1, 11.11%. This year, the amount received was over 30%. Due to this anomaly, the college believes this increase is largely due to a, do a change in methodology used in evaluating properties and therefore believes the protest will, will increase significantly. As you might know, preliminary numbers do not take into consideration many large factors such as protest, increased values in the tax investment zone, and tax ceilings, et cetera. At this time, the college, college's initial plan is to keep the same overall tax rate using a conservative 4.3% net valuation growth and a 300, and 300 million in new construction. Are there any questions on that? Thank you. So looking at the next slide, what you'll see is we have a slight increase in our retirement contribution of 95,000. That has to do with our increase in salaries over the years, so we get a little bit of additional funding there. Our tuition increase, tuition and frees, we reduced our budget by $2 million to compare with enrollment trends, which we've seen over the last two years. And with a 4.3% evaluation growth, keeping the same tax rate, we should receive approximately $4 million in additional revenue. Are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Have, or I guess it's a question. Have we talked to whoever does our property insurance on windstorm this year?
That would be Tammy.
We, we just met on that the other day. And Ms. McDonald and I.
Yes, we did. Our property insurance for all property and contents and windstorm renewed May 1st.
Okay.
So we just renewed and, yes, we did have some changes and some increases.
Yeah.
Pretty much what we're seeing across all the coast.
Okay.
For coastal properties, yes.
Does this reflect that change for next year?
Well, this is revenue, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, insurance contribution. Sorry.
Yeah, that's retirement, that's money we get from the state toward our retirement.
Yeah, that's for state. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? If not, thank you.
Now you get to ask your expense questions. Jackie's coming back.
Jackie's bringing up, I would just like to say that, again, thanks to the team so far. I know they're going to be burning the candle at both ends here pretty quick, as if they don't already. But I, I'd just like to add, Regent Loeb, that, that we are watching that insurance very carefully. It's a big expense. We're going to be talking about that here. But these revenue assumptions right now, everything is very baseline, very, very conservative at this point, in, in a lot of different ways. We, again, we just want to kind of open this can right now and get the conversation going. We're in constant contact with our, with our county officials, as well as our state officials, and, and not to mention our, the various boards out there. We're, when the team came and we met in, in my office and we, we talked about these assumptions, I followed John's lead and the team's lead with just being as conservative as we, as we could right now, not, not assuming anything. Again, there's so much we still have to learn from, from the legislature to determine our, the new funding model and so forth, but I, I remain cautiously optimistic. Thank you, John.
Okay.
So for our preliminary expense increases at this time for salary and benefit increases that will be recommended at a later date. So since we are so early in the process of analyzing our budget request, we have tried to identify just some potential priority items that may need to be considered for funding. So new program development and program growth, along with enhanced student support services, may be needed in the future, and that's being driven by the possible approval of House Bill 8, which will focus on student outcomes and enhance the role of community colleges and workforce training and preparation. For computer hardware and software, we are anticipating increased cost for internet connectivity with the addition of Oso Creek Campus, along with the networking, networking and security equipment to support the internet connection. In addition, we are initiating a college-wide computer replacement schedule to replace outdated computers each year, which includes 300 lab computers and 100 computers for faculty and staff. We are also anticipating an increase and continuous improvement of our network infrastructure capacity to ensure stable and continuous services for students, staff, and faculty. Property insurance is estimated to increase around 30% for next year. For security and safety, we are anticipating our security contract to increase at renewal and an increase in fire and life safety inspections for the addition of the Oso Creek Campus. For ground maintenance, we are anticipating additional costs due to inflation to maintain grounds on all campuses. Are there any questions on this slide? Okay. So for our preliminary expense budget for 2024, we are currently showing to be decided at a later date since we are so early in our analysis. So we'll have more information at our next update, update to the board. And that concludes our budget presentation. Do we have any questions?
Just wanted to provide context, if you'll go back a slide. The staff will take us through the salary matrix and we'll have that discussion at a future date. And they also do a really good job of the non-salary expenses, giving us a good level of detail on that as we go through. So this is the consolidated slide, but there is a lot of detail that goes into that that staff will be providing as we go through. So we'll see a deeper dive in June and a very, very deep dive in July.
Correct.
I do have a question on this. We're remembering from the past slides, we were anticipating a budget of 116 million and in this one, we're saying 114 million?
And that's because we're still very early in the analysis, trying to determine, like, property insurance, that's something that we know we are going to have to fund, and we're still going through and analyzing the request to deter- to determine how we're going to fund everything with the projected revenue that we're seeing.
So that $2 million would be for unanticipated increases in expenses?
Yes. The insurance alone is almost about $1 million, just for the insurance.
Awesome.
Is there any anticipated capital improvements?
So not, we're having discussions around deferred maintenance and some other needs, how we fit this into the program. It all depends on the other priorities of the college. I think right now, the major priorities of the college would be is how do we pivot to this new performance-based funding? And how do we partner well with the state in terms of making sure that we fund those academic programs that are a priority to our current workforce needs? And then definitely throw in some discussions about deferred maintenance and see how it fits in. Because at the end of the day, when you look at what's still messing in the puzzle, you got state funding, and then you also have property taxes, both of which makes up 75% of our operating dollars. So we don't know what that looks like today to even have a more robust, concrete discussion as to what's going to be funded. We know we're having discussions, but how it comes falls into place will depend on what those final numbers look like.
So we are working with Mr. Strabos and team to line out a plan for the future on things that we're currently not working on. Right now, we are currently very actively involved in several projects. One big project, I guess finishing up Oso Creek is a smaller of the size of the projects. I never thought I'd say that. But we currently are really involved in finishing up some of the bond dollars from '14, as well as '16. And we are meeting and working to delineate which maintenance projects need to come to the forefront. In fact, we've already met on that. I think it was just, I don't know, 10, 14 working days ago about that very thing, Regent Kroll. So stay tuned. And certainly call me if you have any specifics. Got some ideas.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all. Mr. Garcia is going to give us a report on the Higher Education Emergency Relief, or HERF, funds.
Yes. All right. So I want to begin with some historical context. The college experienced enrollment growth for two consecutive years through the end of fiscal year 2019. The college was also on track for a third year of record enrollment increase based on our fall 2019 enrollment. However, this forward motion took a downturn when the national pandemic emergency was declared on March 2020. The college immediately pivoted to health and safety protocols predicated on the orders and guidelines by the president, governor, local government, center of disease control, and local medical specialists, and much more, many more. Examples of our protocols included limiting campus access, social distancing, and sanitizing work areas. Our federal government responded in part with a proliferation of fiscal policies that included the CARES Act, the Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and the American Plan Appropriations Act. From these acts came the Higher Educational Emergency Relief Fund, commonly referred to as HERF. This presentation focuses on the two most recent federal awards, which is also referred to as HERF II and HERF III in this presentation, both with a combined value of $30.8 million. These awards have contributed to the resilience of the college throughout the pandemic and has provided our students with much-needed financial support. So one of the three tranches of HERF dollars is the Student Emergency Support valued at $11.5 million, right here in the bottom corner of the slide. And according to what the U.S. Department of Education's HERF Grant Spending Guidelines, the funding could only be used to assist students during the pandemic who were experiencing food and housing insecurities, caring for a family member, loss of a family member, loss of a job, and emotional and/or mental illness. The grant did not, this specific piece of the tranche, did not allow for the use of these resources to pay for tuition and fees without the written consent of the student. However, our records indicate instances of students providing the college with a written authorization to use their grant dollars towards their tuition and fees. The total amount of the $11.5 million used was $6.1 million. The other two items, the institutional share and minority-serving institution funding with a combined value of $19.3 million, were used to defray the college's operating expenses, including lost revenue, technology costs associated with transitioning to distance education, employee training, and student support services. We will take a deeper dive on the $30.8 million spending categories in short order. Are there any questions before we transition to the next slide? So due to the complexity of the grant requirements and the magnitude of the grant awards, a HERF advisory committee was established. The committee was tasked with synthesizing the volumes of grant information to assure compliance with the objectives of the grant and to help plan and execute the spending plan. Fast forward today, the successful execution of the HERF spending plan is attributed to the deep technical expertise of this group and their extraordinary efforts and their respective teams with executing the spending plan. If there are no questions, we will transition to the spending activities on the next slide. So the body of work completed by the advisory committee with feedback from the board and the vision of our president helps shape the grant spending plan valued at $30.8 million. Our spending plan includes three general objectives. They're located at the center of the pie chart. The outer section of the pie chart represents the general spending categories in relation to the objectives. So I have for you a few highlights. Our objective for student support was to provide qualifying students with much-needed financial resources to help them through the pandemic with a value of $13.5 million. This includes the Student Emergency Support valued at $11.5 that I just described earlier in the presentation. In addition to that, the college allocated an additional $2 million to help students pay for their tuition and fees through various student success outreach campaigns. These campaigns included the Add a Class on Us, Tag Your End, and Free Money campaigns. These campaigns were described in great length by Ms. Benavides Dominguez at the November Board HERF Update Presentation. Moving on, the college immediately recognized the need for the delivery of on-campus instruction and support services for instructors and students on a very limited basis. With that said, the next objective focused on creating a health and safety environment for our students and employees based on a wide range of recommendations and protocols from local medical specialists and guidelines from the Center of Disease Control valued at $4 million. The college responded with facility upgrades that included social distancing measures, decontamination activities using specialized equipment and supplies, and a vaccination program for easy access at the discretion of our employees and students. Our faculty upgrades, our facility upgrades, included touchless restrooms, fixtures, water fountains, and indoor air quality system. Our final objective was to transition our operations to a pandemic-driven operating environment, allowing for the long-term sustainability of the college in a period of high uncertainty. The total value of this investment is $13.3 million. It was used mainly for technology coupled with employee training. This investment increased our network connectivity, enhanced our remote learning technology, and elevated our student support services with 24/7 access to financial aid, enrollment, and advising services. You may also recall during the pandemic, technology risks became elevated. I recall regular reporting of organizations who were victimized by ransomware. The college responded to this elevated risk with investments to our cybersecurity. Lastly, indirect and lost revenue, resources were allocated to our Anthology ERP system, the IT AV needs at the Oso Creek Campus, upgrades to our emergency response training program, and marketing costs with a combined value of $4.1 million. If there are no questions, that concludes the presentation. Nope, sorry, one more. So in light of the HERF grant scheduled to expire next month, I'm happy to report today that the college is well-positioned to close out the grants. The college has spent and collected the full grant award value at $30.8 million. Our grants and sponsored research office headed by Christina Gonzalez have been actively involved throughout the life of the grant. The team has done an incredible job advising our wide range of HERF grant stakeholders and has also verified that all grant expenditures were made in accordance with the grant requirements. The office is now well-positioned to transition into the grant closeout phase. The team will have until September to issue the final financial report, issue final vendor payments, and close out open purchase orders. Now, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Good job to everyone. Appreciate all of that information. Any questions for Mr. Garcia? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. McQueen is going to give us our legislative update. How's your crystal ball? Cloudy.
Thank you. And last one of the day. I think that's probably good. Does that make sense? Yeah, there we go. So this one you've seen before when we started, sunny days in 20 days. First deadline, the deadline to do veto or sign a bill is June 18th. We're currently at over 8,000 bills. While it says we have passed 40, as of this morning, it was 110. So it's going really fast. In fact, they worked most of the weekend, so they're working very long hours to get through the programming. We have, at the last report, we had about, hmm, almost 500 bills we were tracking. As you get closer to the end of the legislative session, things don't move beyond committee. Therefore, what they haven't moved beyond committee, we're not tracking them anymore. We don't anticipate that they'll get out of committee and onto one of the appropriate floors for a vote. So it's dropped down to about 195. We track the different levels, 77 on the high probability, high impact, and then you can see the numbers as they go down, but that's the whole 195. I will tell you that number changes as things crop up and surprise us. So we had a bill come in yesterday that was like, it stuck and it didn't go anywhere, and then suddenly it got through committee and got onto the floor, and it's expected to have a hearing. So that will now be translated onto our monitoring list. Did I go too fast? No. All right. These are the ones being monitored, obviously. We've got, I wanted to give you an idea. Obviously, appropriations, SB 1, HB 1, the most important, and then, of course, the HB 8. But we also are tracking about 11 bills that impact tuition, financial aid, and loans, five bills that address property taxes and appraisals. The property taxes and appraisals is down from about 20. So that's good. They're just not moving forward. IT is about eight, curriculum and workforce is about 17, and then campus safety is about five. This, again, is just a reminder. This is the priority passed by this board for the legislative session in conjunction with TAC and the Community College Association of Texas Trustees. So these are the different areas and the associated bills that go with each area of priority focus. And that's the next group. Now, basically, here's the updates on the bills. House Bill 8's passed the House. You can see it passed 146 to 1, so a lot of wonderful support. It ended up with 105 authors or co-authors, which is amazing. It has been referred to the Senate Subcommittee on Higher Education. Basically, SB 2539, the companion bill, is, it's got positive hearings, but we're anticipating House Bill 8 will serve as the bill. And probably, we're anticipating it could get voted out of the Senate Subcommittee. It says by the end of the first week of May, we passed that, so maybe it's by the end of this week is what they're looking at. But the holdup is not because of any challenges with the bill. The holdup is just because of so many different things happening right now and how many different bills they're looking at. So we are looking at multiple amendments that could be attached to address other priority initiatives. Those amendments would be attached to HB 8. Here are some of them. The early high school bills, it's passed the Senate, it's in the House Higher Education Committee. The Texas Innovation Adult Career Education Grant, that's pending in committee. That could be attached to House Bill 8 as an amendment to get this through. And then the Opportunity Higher Education Diploma Pilot Plan, which it came favorable out of committee. I'll have to look and see. I think I had more updates on that, but it went really fast. I tried to update everything this morning, but I couldn't access all the bills. But I think that one's moving forward. The confidentiality of student records is another component. That one actually passed the Education Committee yesterday. And it's HB 4437 has passed the House on the 3rd, so that one's moving quickly. The TEA information regarding post-secondary education and career opportunities has been left pending in the committees, but we do, House Bill 2920 passed the House on the 28th and received in the Senate on May 1st. It's been referred to the Education Committee. All of that just means it's moving forward, so we continue to track anything that's moving forward. These are the priority bills, the TOG grant. It's been passed by the House Higher Education Committee as of the second, so that could still be attached to House Bill 8 as an amendment. And then the Texas Transfer, that one hasn't been updated since this, no way it has. HB 3486 was placed on calendars for May 4th. So a little update on that one. Anyway, it's moving forward. The clinical sites, no changes from what you see here. We're continuing to monitor them. They do address the questions that Regent Garza had on any bottlenecks we have in education. Clinical sites are a big challenge and one that we have to monitor constantly. This bill would make sure that clinical sites throughout the state of Texas are reserved primarily for those institutions that currently operate within Texas and not allow those clinical sites and the opportunities to be opened up to outside agencies and for-profit agencies. So it's a really important bill. Right now, it's affecting primarily Victoria College, but it also can impact any place that could have an opportunity for an outside agency to come in and utilize those sites. So that would further challenge our ability to address the clinical sites and the graduation rates in nursing and health sciences. IT credentials passed the House on the 30th. IT credentials, passed the House on the thirtieth, and is in public hearing in the Senate This just basically talks about the two appropriations. We now have the conference appointment committees, and they're working through. I have, they work in closed committee meetings, so we will not hear anything until it comes out, which is probably a good thing. Let them go ahead and make that sausage without sharing that with us, but it should come out, well, hopefully before Sine Die, otherwise, we're definitely going to a special session. These are some other relevant bills. They are not on that list that was passed as far as priority bills, but there are others that could potentially impact the college. So I'm just letting you know where they are. The workforce, the Lone Star Workforce, great program to actually support workforce funding. SB sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are interesting. They've all passed the Senate. We'll see what happens in the House. Then we have some rotating accreditation bodies. It's passed the Senate, referred to the House. A lot of these have moved through the Senate to the House, and so it's to be determined how quickly they move through, but cyber, okay. I'm just going to keep going. The safety, the campus safety panic buttons, that passed and was signed, so that's one of the bills that's already been enacted. It was for immediate, so that report has already been forwarded over to Tammy, and Lauren, and Lenora, so they can look at that. It's not something that will cost the college money, but it is something that we have to monitor, because we do have a high school on one of our campuses. Yes?
Can you tell us what nursing grants are? HB thirty-nine thirty?
I don't have a lot of details on that one. It just come up on my radar.
Those are usually to supplement nursing faculty, well, their salaries and so forth. But they're probably changing them to some degree. I don't know exactly, but I think it has to do with that. We'll verify.
A lot of TSTC expansion bills. The one that really would impact us is House Bill thirty, forty-eight, the ability to offer programs within a community college service area without notification to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board or the approval of said. But it's had no movement since March.
We're watching that.
Yeah, we continue to watch it. The rest are just information that you've had before. I make sure they're in your board packet, so if you have any need to look at that supplemental information, it's there, but I don't think there's any need to present again on these areas. So that concludes my report. Any questions?
Questions from Mary? Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work to keep us, keep us informed. Regents, we have our pending list in the packet, shows you the upcoming topics that aren't part of the regular calendar, but are part of kind of our board follow-up calendar. I did ask Dr. Eskamia to insert dates in which he's going to provide some strategic plan updates for us, so we know in June, there's going to be a strategic plan update and discussion, and again in October, so that we have a regular touch point on the process as it moves forward. You'll note in our planning calendar that we do not plan a July regular board meeting. We'll talk about that in our upcoming calendar, but we do have a quick called meeting, well, a budget meeting at the end of the month, where we might have an item or two in addition on the calendar.
It's July twenty-fifth.
That's it. Any questions about our pending business? Our last action item of the day will be on our consent agenda. We have three items, including minutes and investment and financial reports from earlier this spring. Is there any of these items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Kruel. I was starting to ready to cough. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Kelly. Any public comment on our consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We will now go into a closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two on real property deliberation, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four-a-one regarding personnel matters, and Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with legal counsel. The time is three fifteen PM. We will take a quick break and meet in our closed session room. Governance. You can attend virtually. You can attend in person if you'd like, but there's several webinars, and then two or three in-person seminars you can attend virtually as well, and it'll also be a focus of the CATT Conference in September. So this is designed to help engage and educate trustees about data-driven governance over the next year. As I said, our July meeting will be on the twenty-fifth at noon. It will be a detailed budget workshop. There may be another item or two on the agenda, just depending on what we need to do from a business standpoint. And then our regular board date on August eighth, and adoption of our budget, and public hearings associated with the budget on August twenty-second. Any questions about calendar? Seeing none, thank you all for being here today. We are adjourned at four twenty-four PM.